I would like to call the Tuesday, July 16th, 2013 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Mrs. Butler, would you please take the role?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. Stupe flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That is correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the council chambers. We've got two recognitions that I want to give. Ms. Hanson, you want to join me at the podium? You go one way, I go the other. It's National Recreation and Parks Month, and we take Parks and Parks very serious in Papillion. And I did want to, on behalf of the city, go ahead and give an official proclamation. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Papillion, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the City of Papillion recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I, David P. Black, Mayor of the City of Papillion, do hereby proclaim the observance of July 2013 as Parks and Recreation Month in Papillion, and urge residents to take advantage of local parks and recreation programs, and witness whereof I have herein to set the hand and cause the official seal of the City of Papillion to be affixed the 16th day of July 2013. Thank you. And speaking of our parks, we have a very special recognition we'd like to give. Mr. Cunningham, Mrs. Williamson, if you'd join me at the podium. Mike Cunningham, if you, I'm sure you know, but is in charge of Walnut Creek Recreation Area. And up on the screen is a flagpole that was just put up last week? Two weeks ago, out at Walnut Creek. And that was dedicated, that's in honor of Tony Williamson. Tony worked for the city for three summers in the Parks Department, and specifically at Walnut Creek. Tony and his wife Fran, they served as camp hosts at Walnut Creek Campground during those years as well. And Tony was a veteran who served 26 years in the Air Force. Tony passed away, and this is a memorial that the family wanted to present in his name. And Walnut Creek, he loved the campground there, and he wanted it to be as nice as he could for other people to enjoy. There is a plaque that's going to be put up, I think it's been ordered, it's not up yet, is it? There's a plaque that's been ordered and will be put on that flagpole, and what it will say is, "This flagpole has been set here to honor John Tony Williamson by his family and friends. Tony was a longtime member of the United States Air Force and a regular visitor to the Walnut Creek Campground. Tony was also a dedicated employee of the City of Papillion, helping oversee the daily care and maintenance of this facility he loved so much. We honor him by flying the colors of our nation in recognition of his service to the country and to this community, the City of Papillion." So that plaque will be there. It's a great place when it's not just a place that you come to work, but it's a place you love. So, thank you very, very much. Mr. Hoynes, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I want to brief the council and the public at large tonight. Some substantial progress on two very important projects. The first one is the construction and renovation of 84th Street from 370 South to Schram Road. Most of the council's well aware that it was in 2007 that the Federal Highway and State Department of Roads, local officials identified that strip of land or that section for substantial improvements to widen it to effectively six lanes, four lanes with turn lanes, et cetera. And I didn't misspeak when I said 2007, the federal government made that award. So it is over the last, since February of this year, city staff, and when I say city staff, I'm talking about primarily the city engineer, the city attorney-
And that was a shovel-ready project back then.
Was a shovel-ready project back then. So they turned-
It was not completed until now.
They effectively turned over our portion of it in November. We picked it up in February with direction to complete everything by August 15th. Now, to give you some scope, that completion included resolving private property ownership with 32 tracts of lands and multiple property owners. That was accomplished, again, primarily by Carla and by Jeff, and I'm sure other city staff was involved in it. But we did resolve all of those. There were five that we did have to get a court-determined value on, but we're going to meet the August 15th deadline. What that means, council members and mayor, is that the funds should be obligated fully to us in September of this year. And that's close, was it Jeff, $10 million project close? That's a $10 million improvement for the community. They should be obligated in September, and should actually go to bid in October. If the bids come in where we think they are within budget, we would start construction in the spring of '14 with a projected completion date of the fall of '15, so give us two construction seasons. So, that is a very much-needed, long-time project. I want to point out, A, the substantial progress, but two, a couple of staff members, I think the last couple of months have dedicated a fair amount of time, much of it before eight or after five at night, to get that done, so we do appreciate that. The other project, council members and mayor, we discussed briefly in here, the transition of the fire department to a combined department with the City of La Vista. As most of you are aware, about a year ago, the City of La Vista came to the City of Papillion. They've had a fully volunteer fire department for a lot of years. They hired a consultant that gave them multiple options to provide better fire service to the citizens of La Vista, and one of those options being the City of Papillion, whom has a paid fire department, full-time career, to provide services and combine our departments effectively with La Vista and the rural fire district. This evening, the City of La Vista staff, city administrator, and fire chief are presenting publicly to their mayor and council a recommendation that they do pursue combination department, paid department, with the City of Papillion of their multiple four or five options that they've been researching for the last year or so. What does that mean to us? August 6th is a real key, important date. There will be an inter-local presented to you as a city council, and the La Vista City Council, and the Papillion Rural Fire District, that effectively will set the parameters for that to take place between now and April 1 of 2014, next spring. It's going to take us several months to facilitate that. It's also very important to keep in mind that Mayor Black and the feedback from the council for the public is that we wouldn't pursue this unless we could maintain and improve the safety in Papillion and the surrounding area at the same or less cost. The budget, and this is the second important, August 6th is also important, too. There'll be the introduction of the annual budget for next year. That budget includes combining La Vista and adding 12 new firefighters. As you're well aware, I reported last week that we're not proposing a tax increase for any of that. And now it's a whole budget that you'll be considering, but that key component of the fire department budget will be introduced on August 6th to the public. So, if the interlocals approve, city staff from Papillion, La Vista, and rural fire district will work on the implementation phase, which effectively is hiring 12 firefighters and assigning them at the two La Vista stations, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. The projected budget that we've worked on actually shows a decrease in cost to the citizens of Papillion and the rural fire district to do that. It's really pretty simple math, for a guy like me who's not very good at math. We're bringing three payers on instead of two. And so, I'm actually pretty excited about it. I think that it shows, I think, some innovation and some good government. It is rolling out in the public tonight, so that's, again, you've been brief council and provided documents over the last couple of months, I think, on some of that, but probably within the next day or two, and certainly the next few weeks, you'll be hearing from your constituents, and then there'll be some public discussion on that. And so I wanted to give you as much advanced time as I could to let you know that that is going to be the recommendation of City La Vista staff, I assume, or their administrator assumed that her council would be supportive of that recommendation. So, to conclude my report, Mr. Mayor, by saying that if you, as a council member, quite frankly, any members of the public that are here tonight or watching have questions or concerns about that, this is the time to really engage your elected officials and city staff about your thoughts on that process, because it will effectively be finalized the first meeting, I think it's the 6th or something, the first Tuesday of September, with adoption of the budget for next year. So that's when not only the formation would be approved and the budget, but then we would really get to work and start doing that. So, again, two, it's been a busy summer, but two very key, important projects, I think, that are going to make a difference in the City of Papillion. So, that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Stube. Do you have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? And just for council, I do believe there's three special-designated permits on consent, and I believe all the applicants are here. Please vote.
Five V A zero nays.
Motion passes, thank you. Next is Item D1, Ordinance 1669, an ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of Lot 82 Western Hills in addition to the City of Papillion in Sarpy County, Nebraska, also known as 801 Bailey Drive, to home-building consultants and provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Stube. Next is Item F1, Resolution R130039-05, a resolution to approve right-of-way and permanent easements, as well as temporary easement acquisitions for the Washington Street, 84th Street reconstruction from Cedar Dale Road to Capeport Road. Do we have motion to approve Resolution R13003905? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Ingberg. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Five V A zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is Item F2, Resolution R130099. This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve the Third Amendment to the Portal Plaza South Mixed Use Development Agreement to amend the permitted use list to allow religious assembly for the property legally described as lots 1 through 3, lots 6 through 10, inclusive Portal Plaza South Lot 1, Portal Plaza South Replat 1, and lots 1 and 2, Portal Plaza South Replat 2. Subdivisions is plotted and recorded in Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located 108th Street and Portal Road. The applicant is Vin, I can never say it, Vintage Limited Liability Company, LLC. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Proponents, Mr. Jobin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Ventiker LLC. This amendment to the mixed-use development agreement will allow this property to be leased to the Shadow Lake Community Church. And with me tonight from Shadow Lake Community Church is Pastor Lance Birch, as well as an elder, Doug Dickie, and then also, I think, Ray Keller may have a few words as well on behalf of the church, but there'll be your three speakers. As far as the amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Portal Plaza South, it really primarily addresses three issues. The first is to allow religious assembly in this particular subdivision. The second is to update the mixed-use development agreement to reflect the code changes that you've had with respect to some of the permitted uses in a mixed-use area. And the third is to modify the building design requirements to reflect what's actually out there. Some of the buildings that are already built have some materials on them that aren't currently called for in the mixed-use development agreement, so it corrects that as well. So at that, I'm happy to turn it over to the pastor and the other members of the church to tell you, you know, how they picked this space and how it's relevant to their intended use, and then we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. And if you'd state your name for the record.
Lance Birch, 4603 Victoria Avenue, Mayor Black, members of the city council and city officials. Many of the people crowding into this room right now are a small sampling of Shadow Lake Community Church, a church that's been a part of the Papillion area community for 16 years, and I've been the lead pastor at Shadow Lake for two years. And when my family was considering the move to what I then called Papillon, we did a lot of research online, just to see what sort of community this was. And it was a real encouragement and a relief to find that what I now know as Papillion was consistently rated one of the top five places to live in America. I know, and I recognize, that in order for this to happen, the leadership of this city has to work very hard to stay focused on the important things. The city council, working with the mayor, has done just that. So, thank you from a new resident for your hard work and diligence in making Papillion a great place to put down roots and to raise a family. Our church considers itself a partner with you and the vision to improve our community. Our longstanding vision is to have an eternal impact on our community. We realize this by funding mission efforts in Papillion and the surrounding areas, partnering with nonprofits to bring help to those in need, providing parenting training seminars, youth and children's ministries, and other efforts to make a real tangible difference in the lives of those in Sarpy County, specifically Papillion. To bring this into focus, we often ask the question, if our church disappeared, would our community notice? It's our hope that our absence would be felt, and it's our intention that our impact would be positive. We worship our God by serving others, and we believe that this impact will last for years to come and even stretch out into eternity. This kind of eternal impact can only come from one place, and that's real, genuine love. We use in our church a guiding principle from our Bible, which says in 1 John 3:18, "Dear children, let us not merely say that we love each other; let us show the truth by our actions." However, our church, our growth as a church has been throttled by our current facility. We currently meet in a building that's 10,000 square feet with 800 attendees on a Sunday. We have extremely limited parking, and this has caused some strain in the neighborhood from time to time. We've tried to alleviate the overcrowding by adding services, but it's become apparent to all of us that in order to continue to fulfill our vision of bringing glory to God by making a real impact on our community, we have to give ourselves room to grow. Throughout a process of about a year and a half, in which we identified many possible church sites, and we pursued many of them, and then for various reasons, we were unable to secure them for our future campus, we finally found the direct-by building on Portal Road. This property will double our facility from day one. We'll be able to have a dedicated high school and junior high ministry space. Our auditorium will seat around 500. Now, I realize that while it may be hard to measure the impact that a church has on a community, I would hope that all of us can agree that people of faith are a benefit to the blocks, neighborhoods, and cities in which they reside. It's our hope that in the years to come, that Shadow Lake Community Church will be known in the area as a church that loves and cares for everyone, not just by saying it, but by showing it. You can help us get to a place of greater impact by approving this amendment to the mixed-use agreement for Portal Plaza. I would ask that you help us start out the next chapter in our church's story by doing just that. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Mr. Keller, I think you know the process. If people are not aware, Mr. Keller serves on the Planning Commission. But you did abstain from this vote, I believe.
I did. It's a lot easier to be, well, sometimes it's a little easier to be over there, so I don't mean to say it that way, but-
And if people are aware, all the time that we have high school students come here, it's Mr. Keller that's sending them here.
You're building me up here a little too much, I think, just to let you know.
Thank you for both of those.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Raymond Keller, Jr., and I live at 1108 Crest Road in Papillion. Mayor Black, members of the city council and city officials. My family and I have attended Shadow Lake Community Church for the past seven years. Currently, I serve as the chairman of the Elder Board for Shadow Lake Community Church. In addition to my letter of July 12th, which I'm sure you all were excited to read, I want to make just a few comments in support of the resolution. I'm excited about this opportunity for Shadow Lake Community Church to move into the former direct-by location. This move is not about numbers, per se, but about making a larger and more positive impact on individuals and families in Papillion. It's hard to measure the amount of impact great places of worship have on a city, but I think it's safe to say the City of Papillion has reaped great rewards from the strong church presence in Papillion, regardless of denomination. The pilot study I cited in my letter to you said each church studied in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, had a $4.3 million positive financial impact, or what the University of Pennsylvania deemed to be a halo effect on their community. Of course, I can't, nor does the study suggest that it can be extrapolated to every church in America or even Papillion. But I do believe, and with some certainty can say, that there is a huge impact being made by these churches. It's hard to quantify the positive impact of low crime rates, strong families, and my favorite, great schools. I believe healthy people make healthy families, healthy families make healthy communities. Shadow Lake Community Church has played a vital role in helping people in Papillion live spiritually, financially, and physically healthy lives. In my mind, there is no doubt that Shadow Lake Community Church and other places of worship have helped make Papillion one of the top places to live in the United States. Part of the mission at Shadow Lake Community Church is to make a positive impact in the community, country, and world. I believe Shadow Lake Community Church has and will continue to make this impact in Papillion. I'm asking the Papillion City Council to approve this resolution. Thank you for your time, consideration, and vote of support for this resolution. And also, thank you for being so nice to my students when they come here as well. I didn't have that in my little speech, but they really, truly do, they like it better than the school board meeting. This isn't going to go on television, is it?
It will.
And, Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate you engaging them and letting them come up and introduce themselves. It's a really a good process. And Mr. Mayor has been, spoke at our, in my classroom a couple of different times, and taken quite a bit of time to do that, so it's kind of not on the subject, but thank you.
Appreciate that. Mr. Mumgarth?
Mr. Keller, just one question. This may not make any difference, but I was curious, what's going to happen to your current location?
We're going to be, we're in negotiations to sell that, so there's already, there's a purchase agreement for that at this time.
Will that be another religious-
Yes.
-organization?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? And if you'd state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name's Doug Dickie. I live at 1009 Bren Mauer Drive in Papillion. Mayor Black, members of the city council and city officials. I've attended Shadow Lake Community Church with my wife and six children for the past six years. I joined our Board of Elders last year. As a church, we've enjoyed being in Papillion, in the Papillion area for more than 15 years now. As Lance mentioned, we've seen our group grow from a handful of people to approximately 800 attendees on a Sunday. These include people not only from the Papillion community, but also from Bellevue, La Vista, Omaha, Council Bluffs, and even as far away as Tabor, Iowa. These people don't just attend church on Sundays, they also bring their children to youth events and Papillion community events, such as the Papillion Days Parade and Carnival. They give not only their time and their resources to our congregation, but they also frequent Papillion businesses, whether it's to get a cup of coffee or just have lunch at Shadow Lake restaurants. The church serves not only our youth, but youth throughout the community. Both church students, as well as students that don't attend church on a weekly basis, attend those activities. We provide weekly meeting times for 5th graders through high schoolers, in addition to providing special events like a specialized Papillion scavenger hunt for high school-age students and Halloween activities. On Saturday, July 13th, I sent an email to all members of the city council, which included a letter of support from the Shadow Lake Church attendees, asking that the city council support the rezoning of the Portal Road facility. Over 61% of the respondents signing that letter of support are registered voters within Papillion, and the letter outlines our appreciation of the City of Papillion's support, as well as our reasons for wanting to remain in Papillion and continue to be a vibrant part of the community. Based on the impact the church makes within the community and our sincere desire to play an active role here, I would ask the council members to give a unanimous decision in favor of rezoning the facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Do you have any opponents? Anybody you want to speak against? I'll close the public hearing. Before we take the motion, Mr. Jobin, you want to come up real quick?
Yes.
You've been in front of these councils enough, and I think, though, you can see that we're short a few council members. You know the impact of that, but mainly just for the public, and then I'll ask you. We've got five council members. Normally, we have eight, and to have something pass, it needs to be a majority of the full council, not a majority of who's here. So, that means you need five affirmative votes for your motion to pass. There's five people here. So if there's one dissenting vote, creates a unique situation. So, I just wanted to offer that, make sure you're aware of the situation. If for any reason you want to request of the council a motion to continue, I'm sure they would entertain that. One of them would have to make it, and it'd have to be a second and a vote on that, but I just wanted to make sure you knew of the situation and give you the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I guess I would ask that if for some reason someone was inclined to vote against the project, that maybe we would vote to lay it over as opposed to actually vote against the project. That way, we could have a full council, hopefully, next month, in which to hear this particular case. But I feel fairly comfortable that we're okay, and I hope we are. So, I'm here to answer questions and-
Mr. Mumgarth?
I have a question.
Sure.
You're an experienced guy in the area of zoning, planning, and how cities grow. I was interested in one of the subject matters that the Planning Commission brought up repeatedly, and it was the concern about the loss of industrial zone land. We only have a little bit of that in Papillion. It tends to be along Cornhusker there. We've had conversations in the council about other projects that have popped up that may want to rezone along that area. And frankly, I was wondering your view. Try to give me an objective view. How much should I be concerned that the area that fits nicely for industrial use, which is primarily along Cornhusker, seems to be being carved away into other uses that might go elsewhere? And that leaves the City of Papillion without the ability to attract small industrial use businesses, which I think is a negative toward our community. That's what's going to be a consequence of this rezoning. And it was discussed a little bit at the Planning Commission. How much should I be concerned about that?
Well, that's a very good question, but I guess what I would do is go back to the original mixed-use development agreement, and it contemplated a number of different uses within the original development. And those permitted uses included office-type uses. It actually included civic-type uses, so there was a number of civic uses that were actually permitted as part of the original development, and they just didn't have religious assembly. So, we're here tonight to amend the original mixed-use development agreement to provide for that. Also, it included a number of commercial use types, and then a couple of industrial use types. But the industrial use types were really light industrial, and that's, and you can tell by that, by the nature of the buildings. When you look at the direct-by building and the other buildings that are there, they're actually very nice. They're more commercial in nature. There's very little by way of industrial-type uses, and I guess if you talk to the developer, the character of this area has really changed over time. For whatever reason, it didn't really develop as an industrial-type site. It lent itself more to kind of the retail, commercial-type uses with a very light industrial-type impact. One thing that we did do also, though, in order to preserve the industrial nature of part of this development, is we did put a provision in here, there's going to be some covenants in the, that are going to bind lots 8, 9, and 10, which are on the further south portion of the development. So those have to be used or zoned for industrial-type uses. So we did preserve part of the industrial nature, the subdivision, but recognizing that the character of the development to the north really has changed quite a bit, and that this particular use is compatible with the civic uses that were originally called for in the development. I hope that answers your question.
Well, yeah, and I guess I'll concede to you that the area that you're talking about, the direct-by store, in many ways is more of a commercial development than an industrial development. And so the impact of that, of changing that specific place is much less, but I guess I'm looking at your next client, or the client after that, as we move further east on Cornhusker. How, I guess I'm just speaking more to the council than to you, that this is the first step in doing something that I think could turn out to be a bad choice for the City of Papillion. And that, as land further east begins to come in- come in with other proposed uses, that the concern about loss of light industrial areas needs to be paramount. And, you know, in this situation, as I read the Planning Commission, I thought, well, yeah, you know, it's a legitimate question, but really doesn't make that big a difference here. And I just want to remind the council that that is a question that popped up here. We should not make light of it, that it means a lot, because it's really, really hard to find places to put light industrial. Somehow or other, people don't want to live next to it, and I don't understand that, but, you know, that's the way it is.
But the light industrial nature is still preserved in this agreement. We didn't change it to the point where they're not permitted uses. They just have to be a certain distance away from a civic-type use. So that, that character, I guess, of the development is still preserved in the agreement.
I find that a good thing. I'm glad you have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R. 13009? Motion by Councilman Jaworski? Second by Councilman Ingberg. Any other council discussion? Mr. Glover.
I have a question, probably relates more to the pastor. Pastor, you indicated possibility of having high school, junior high at some point. How many students would you anticipate that you would have?
Lance Birch, 4603 Victoria. We would have, we would have 50 to 60, I believe, on Wednesday nights.
I think he makes it, they can have a school.
Oh, a school.
I'm thinking about a day's school.
Oh, see, we are not going to start, schools are very smart. They never start churches, and we're not going to start a school.
Well, that's, you know, that probably takes care of some of my concern, because I was thinking about parking and student, you know, traffic going in and out of the facility during the day. And obviously, you have a lot of students here now, and if you had a lot of traffic getting out of there, it could, you know, obviously could pose some problems.
Yeah, I agree.
If you're not thinking about a day's school, I guess, doesn't take care of my concern.
Yeah, that's definitely not on the table.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
I take it that's been a long haul.[938.01][938.01](Laughter) And I know you're probably being courteous by staying. We've got a lot on the agenda, and if you really are interested, you can stay, but you're not going to hurt Next on the agenda is item F.3, Resolution R. 130100, a resolution to approve a release of easement and dedication of easement for the portion of the Buffalo sewer outfall with Clatterbuck addition. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 130100?
No, sir.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski? Second by Councilman Glover. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
Motion passes. Next is item F.4, Ordinance 1664, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from agricultural AG to mixed-use MU and multiple-family residential R.4 for the property legally described as a plating of tax lots 3, 4, 5, and 6 in the west half of the northeast quarter, together with part of the east half of the northeast quarter, all in Section 31, Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on the southwest corner of 120th Street and Highway 370, the applicant is BHI Development LLC. This is Ashbury Farms. I believe applicant is here. This is an ordinance that needs amended as well. So I guess we'll take first, is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1664? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have a motion to amend Ordinance 1664 to change the lot configuration to reflect the final plat? Amendment by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have proponents on the motion to amend? Any oppo, oh, go ahead. This is just on the motion to amend.
Correct. John Bachman, 10250 Regency Circle. I'm here on behalf of the developer. I'll be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any opponents? Please vote on the motion to amend.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
Thank you. And do we have any proponents on the motion as amended? Any opponents? Council discussion? And before you vote, just do want to make you aware that this item is contingent upon the others that we'll be discussing as well. Please vote on the motion as amended.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
Motion passes. Next is item F.5, Resolution R. 130108, a resolution to approve the final plat for the property legally described as a plating of tax lots 3, 4, 5, and 6 in the west half of the northeast quarter, together with the part of the east half of the northeast quarter, all in Section 31, Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on the southwest corner of 120th and Highway 370, applicant is BHI Development. Do we have motion to approve Resolution R. 130108? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? The applicant is still here. Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mungard.
Mr. Bachman, maybe you're the one that I need to ask a question to. I'm looking at the plat, and I'm not sure if this is, if I should bring this up on this final plat or on the subdivision agreement, but I'm not seeing park space in there, and I suspect that's because there was never any park space in the preliminary plat, right?
And there will be park space adjoining on the east side of the project.
Okay. And I don't know that I need to do this now, but I would request that staff keep in mind, either for this project, the one to the east, the one to the north, somewhere in that grouping, we need to designate and have an agreement for a future splash pad location. I've heard from council members in the past on this subject matter that we should, because splash pads are such an onerous activity, you know how they just ruin a neighborhood, we need to get them in before people move in there. And I'm kind of probably several months behind in bringing this up, but I hope at some time before we complete all the development process out there, around the Ashery Farms and North Shore and all those, that somewhere in that package, we have a designated splash pad, so that all those people who might move in next to it know what they're getting. And so, council members in the future who want a budget for the western splash pad will have the freedom to do that without people telling them, oh, no, don't put this terrible thing across the street from me, because kids might play there and scream and have fun. That would be terrible. So (laugh) I addressed that to some of the council members. So I don't think it's something that holds up this, but as this, I want the planning director to recognize that as we move forward, would you do whatever you can, in which you feel is appropriate, to try to designate a spot out there for a splash pad if the council in the future desires? When I looked through here, I was looking for a spot to stick it in yours. I didn't find it, but we'll...
But, yeah, the majority of the park ground is going to be located to the east, and quite frankly, this developer has most of that under contract at this point and/or closed on it. So we'll be before you on other projects in this area.
Well, good. Well, you can tell the developer, we'd be very, very happy if the word splash pad shows up someplace there.
All right. We'll work with Mr. Sturzma on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ingberg.
I'm just shocked.[1358.83][1358.83](Laughter)
Mr. Jaworski.
I hope I say this right, but he is our splash pad shark.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
Motion passes. Next is item F.6, Resolution R. 130109, a resolution to approve the Ashbury, Ashbury Farms subdivision agreement. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R. 130109?
No.
Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Jaworski. You will note that there was information provided before the meeting in regards to an amendment that's required for this one as well. There's actually three items. Let me go ahead and read them to see if we have a motion to amend Resolution R. 130109. To number one, Section 4 Subsection B to strike the following language, including but not limited to the driveway relocation for adjoining properties, and then add number four, in quotes, "the cost of the driveway relocation for the adjoining properties." Number two, in Section 4 Subsection L, to read as follows, in quote, "Trails and sidewalks. 100% of the entire cost of the trail sidewalk installation shall be borne by general obligation. When the adjoining land at the east of 120th Street develops, city shall require the district being reimbursed for the 50% of the entire cost attributable to the trail located within the eastern portion of the 120th Street right-of-way by the subdividers of the adjoining land," close quote. Number three, replace in its entirety Exhibit B with the source and use funds that's dated 7/15/13." Is there a motion to amend? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion on the motion to amend? Please vote.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
Motion is amended. Do we have proponents? Opponents? Council discussion on the motion as amended? Please vote.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
Motion passes. Next is item F.7, Resolution R. 130110, a resolution to approve the Ashbury Farms Sewer and Water Connection Agreement. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Councilman Jaworski? Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
Next is item F.8, Resolution R. 130111, a resolution to approve an interlocal agreement for the Western Springs Outfall Sewer, Ashbury Farms. There's another memo at your desk that is outlining that the correct figure is the one that's in the source and use of funds from Exhibit 6. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R. 130111? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Jaworski. Proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
Motion passes. Next is Resolution R. 130112, a resolution to approve the Ashbury Farms Public Water Main Construction Reimbursement Agreement. Do we have motion to approve Resolution R. 130112? Motion by Councilman Mungard? Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
Motion passes. Next is item F.10, Resolution R. 130113, a resolution to approve the Ashbury Farms escrow agreement for the public water main construction. Do we have motion to approve Resolution R. 130113? Motion by Councilman Jaworski? Second by Councilman Mungard. Any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
Motion passes. Next is committee reports. I don't think we had any committees meet in the last two weeks. Any comments from the floor? I see Mr. Ackley joined us. Thank you. No comments from the floor? Any council comments? Quiet group. Just a couple of updates from the last couple of weeks. Met a couple of times with some Boy Scout groups, talked mainly about constitutional rights and responsibilities, and federal and state and local. Actually, was the emcee for the Shadow Lake Concert Series one Friday night, attended the Sounds of Freedom concert out at Warner, and also joined Mayor Stothert and gave a proclamation to the Storm Chasers. This is the 45th year of their affiliation with the Kansas City Royals. It's the longest affiliation within minor league baseball, and ended up being the 45th game of the 45th year. Tended the mayor's triathlon. Lori and Tim and staff did another excellent job. That event was up 50 from the prior year. Everybody that went in the water came out of the water, which is always a nervous point. Got a lot of great feedback. Did have a little bit of a sad note, do want to express sympathies. There was one participant that was driving up from Nebraska City and was in a tragic car accident and was killed on their way up to the triathlon. Dr. Dion Huggins from, is a chiropractor down in Nebraska City, and his wife Stacy is, had a 13-year-old daughter Chloe and a 10-year-old daughter Ellie. So I guess on behalf of the city of Papillion, want to express our sympathies to them. But again, thank you for a great event, as always. And then, at the YMCA, the Omaha Rose Society had a dedication of a rose garden. If you've been out to Walnut Creek by the boat docks, they have a rose garden out there, and they did one at the Y, and we had a dedication of that as well. I think those are the major highlights. We've got a couple of active conversations going on, some economic development efforts. In fact, we have a meeting tomorrow with a prospect on an exciting project. And so hopefully, we'll cross fingers, have some wins to be announced in fairly soon. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Mungard. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Stube. Please vote.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
We are adjourned.